Stepped away.
No problem. Okay, let's get going. It is Monday, March 22, 4:00 PM. Our special study session, City Council meeting. This meeting is being held via teleconference only in order to reduce the risk of spreading COVID-19 in pursuant to the governor's executive orders and the County of Los Angeles Public Health Officer orders. All votes taken during the teleconference meeting will be by roll call vote, and the vote will be publicly reported. To view this meeting, I think we know, you go to malibu city.org/videor malibu city.org/virtualmeeting. To participate before the meeting, you're encouraged to send emails to citycouncil@malibu city.org. To participate during the meeting, members of the public may be, may speak during the meeting through the Zoom application. You must first sign up to speak before the item you would like to speak on has been called. Then you must be present in the Zoom conference we recognize. Please go to malibu city.org/virtualmeeting and follow the directions for signing up to speak and to download the Zoom, Zoom application if needed. Can I have roll call, please?
Councilmember Farrar.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Here.
Councilmember Yurin.
Here.
Mayor Protem Grisanti.
Here.
Mayor Pearson.
Here.
You have court.
Okay, I'll now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second emotion.
Okay, can we have roll call on that, please?
Councilmember Farrar.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grisanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin.
Yes.
Mayor Pearson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Can we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on March 18, 2021.
Okay, and as we get into this, the City Council policies, a couple of things. First of all, this will not be the only meeting, just to make sure people know that. No, nothing will be decided on tonight. And I'm going to set a hard stop of this meeting for 6 o'clock, so we have a time for a break before our next meeting. Don't know if it'll go that long, but hard stop there.
Stop, Mikey.
And, excuse me?
You think, can you consider a 5:30 stop? I haven't eaten dinner yet. I might get a little bit of food before I go.
I am big time with you on a 5:30 stop, so I'm just going to call a 5:30 stop and thank Mr. Yurin for that comment because that works really well for me. So, item 1A, City Council Policies. I am going to turn this meeting over to Mayor Protem Grisanti as he is on that ad hoc committee. So with that, Paul, take it away.
Good evening, citizens of Malibu and members of the City Council. I want to start by thanking my partner in the ad hoc committee, Karen Farrar. We did a tremendous amount of work. Between the two of us, we were able to main, get copies of the codes of conduct protocols, rules of engagement, whatever you want to call them, for at more than 10 different communities surrounding us. We read those. Some of them were horrible, more poorly organized than ours. Some of them were much better organized for ours. We saw a variety of different policies, including more than one who said that you had to be on the council for at least two years before you could be mayor. And what we have tried to do here is take the existing policies, weed through the 51 policies that have been adopted since we became a city, less than 10 during the 2000s, the 20, and adopt what the other ones and, and have noticed that several of these things are actually available at different places in our various other things that really don't have much to do with the council. For example, the very first thing that came out as a policy was city use of vehicles, which doesn't have much to do with us. It's already in the administrative guidelines. And the idea here is for someone who comes into office or a member of the public can pick up a copy of the policies, work their way through the part in the front that tells you where to find stuff, go find it, and see what should be happening in any given area. So Karen, do you have something you'd like to say about this?
Sure. Thank you, Paul. As Mayor Protem Grisanti said, we reviewed policies and protocols from several other cities. They were Agoura Hills, Avalon, Calabasas, Hermosa Beach, Lake Forest, our own, San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, Santa Paula, Westlake Village, and the proposal from councilmembers Silverstein and Yurin. And I also read a report from Santa Cruz County regarding the grand jury investigations into the Santa Cruz City Council of the last couple of years. And there's quite an extensive section in that on social media. The ad hoc committee, which was elected, gosh, I guess in December, met, I think it was six times. And what was the point? The point was to research the best practices in the policies and protocols of other communities. So we gave it our best shot. We put no small amount of time into this. And as Mayor Protem Grisanti said, some of the current Malibu policies are outdated, some are redundant, some are covered by municipal law, some relate to staff policy, and that's why we want to go through them by resolution. So, and I want to thank City Attorney John Cotty, interim City Attorney John Cotty, for his work with us as well.
Mr. Yurin?
Yeah, question. When you go, when you set out to do these, okay, what were your objectives? I mean, in terms of, other than looking what other cities done, what were you trying to do for Malibu?
I'll answer that. I did just say it, but I'll say it again. We were researching the best practices in other communities.
Okay, but what does that have to do with Malibu? Are they reflective of what Malibu needs, or they're reflective of what somebody else needs?
Well, some of us, you know, there are, there are universal themes for all municipalities, and in many ways, Malibu is unique. So we address both.
Mayor, I just wanted to break in really quickly and let you know that you have 17 speakers on this item. If you wanted to hear from them before you get into discussion.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Paul, I'll leave, I'll let you take, yeah, keep the helm here.
Okay. Can you tell us who these speakers are lined up and, and usher them in at appropriate moments?
Sure. The speakers as listed are Jonathan Kay, Pamela Conley Ulick, John Laza, Joe Patterson, Lori Patterson, Suzanne Goldman, Lester Tobias, Hamish Patterson, Pat Healy, Kami Winnecoff, Walter Zelman, Carla McCleskey, Howard Redsky, Ryan, Terry Lukoff, Lynn Norton, and Colleen Baum. The last time I checked, Jonathan Kay was not in the meeting.
Can we circle back to him and go on to the number two one?
Of course. Neither is Pamela Conley Ulick, so we'll start with John Laza.
Good evening, John.
Now I'm omitted. Good evening. The first comment I want to make is this apparently was set up in December. Three months later, you come to us and you give us notice Thursday evening for a special meeting on Monday, instead of in the general meeting on Monday night, which it easily could have been posted. So, of course, without a lot of push, there wouldn't have been any speakers. And this is a bad sign to begin with. Now, over 30 years, the planning, the city councils, various city councils came up with these policies. And it was the era of good governance in Malibu. Of course, the last 10 years, maybe there haven't been any because there hasn't been a lot of good governance, but that's my opinion. What, what we read in the staff report is, delete, 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 delete. We'll give you some resolutions later. Well, things like deleting a city policy that the, the welfare of the people goes ahead of the welfare of individuals is not a good thing. And so what's going to replace it? A lot of these policies are very important. Now, have you ever tried to find a resolution in, in, in the city website? A specific resolution? It's virtually impossible. And here we go. How are these resolutions going to be seen and read? And how do they govern the city? Not just your actions, every action you take is a resolution. Can any action be taken at any resolution? We do four or five a night. So this is, this is something that's a mystery. And it's, it's going to be discussed supposedly. And when you look at the staff report, it says it's coming back in April to be voted on. Well, April's, you know, 10 days away. So what's going on? Why are we doing this? And why are we changing our mayoral system? And why are we disrespecting the top two vote getters in the last election? They will not be allowed to be mayor during this election term, period. That's what you're voting on. That's not right. The, the the majority of the, the voters didn't want that. But you're deciding to do that. And on a very quick time schedule with two basically fairly novice planning councilmen deciding it. Karen, a year and a quarter ago, announced in a meeting she had never heard of the council policies.
John, that's your time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, John. Who do we have next?
Next, we'll hear from Joe Patterson.
Good evening, Joe. Are you there?
Hi. Hi.
That doesn't sound like a very good connection. Hello? Hello?
Yes, can you hear? Can you hear?
No, we can't. Can you try again? Hello? Hello? Can we circle back to them after they straightened out the phone line problem and get to the next one?
Our next one, we want to hear from Lori Patterson.
I bet you they were both on the line at the same time. Lori, are they, you there? Lori, are you there? Totally intelligible.
And Lori just left the meeting too, so we can move on to Suzanne Goldman.
Hello, Suzanne? Are you there? Yes, hello?
Hello, hello?
Yes, we hear you, Suzanne.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Did, did you ever see that Marvel Comics movie where Captain America and his friends discover that the agency they serve turns out to have been infiltrated by the bad guys? Because I feel like I woke up in that movie this morning. My email inbox and phone messages were full of concerns about coups and power plays, but this wasn't a Russo Brothers screenplay. It was Malibu City Hall. It's been my job as a reporter for nearly two decades to read, understand, and summarize agendas and government issues. I read this staff report for the items before you, and I'm still not sure what it actually says. I think that's a big part of the concerns being expressed by the community today. To me, it feels like these changes are being fast-tracked, and I'd like to know why. What's the urgency when it's taken us years to try and put changes like the dark sky ordinance and the rodenticide ordinance in place so we could get them right? We've always been told that it's important to take the time to do it right. I'm troubled by the changes that may have the inadvertent effect of affecting ordinances like the dark skies that will make it more difficult possibly to enforce them. I'm troubled by the proposed change to the very sensible compromise instituted by, I think, former councilmember Sharon Barofsky that gives every council member, whether the majority agrees with their position or not, an opportunity to serve as mayor during their four-year term. Without an explanation for this change, it comes across as politically motivated, and I realize that tensions continue to run high between the factions on the council. Unfortunately, because of that, these proposed changes feel reactionary instead of visionary. They feel like they are part of the dysfunction instead of the part of the solution to it, and that's unfortunate because this isn't a comic book. We are the good guys here. We are supposed to work together to make sure our city government runs smoothly and fairly and transparently. That's what we all want. The item before you requires more time, more public input. It needs a better, clearer staff report that lays out the changes and the rationalization behind them. If you approve the changes without those things, without a fuller discussion, unfortunately, that discussion will always be, that decision will always be problematic. Let's wait and get this right. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Who's next?
Next, we'll hear from, let's see, it was Lester Tobias. I don't think he's in the meeting right now, so we'll move to Hamish.
Can we circle back to Lester?
Next, we'll hear from Hamish Patterson.
Hey, Hamish, what's new and exciting?
Good evening, council. Hey, Paul, how you doing?
Good.
So I guess we can hear me. You never know nowadays. Yes?
Yes, sir. We can.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm a little concerned too. On, I know we, there's a bunch of, you know, stale bread, so to speak, in some of these policies that need to be updated. I am a little bit concerned, as, as Suzanne just mentioned, this does have the tinge of politics and factionalities going on, especially with the, the adoption of some of these administrative guidelines. Having read through them, it's, it's a huge undertaking, that alone. And I think that, that realistically, some of them, like the, like where you get the poli, the word, you're deleting one and you're putting three, five, and six, and 44, they kind of can be balled together, but some of these delete and delete and approved by resolution, they, they're really concerning. I mean, you've got private property, environmental enhancement, self-determination, bluffs, traffic, pest management. Each one of these deserves a staff report, involvement by the city attorney, what these mean on the long-term basis. Yeah, I'm concerned that this got dropped on us on Thursday night and it, and we're digging through paperwork. There's 17 people here on the public comments and watching live, like, that's not city involvement at 4 o'clock on a Monday, kind of late, and it, it just, it just reeks of partisanship and dirty play and I, I think that on its own, that the, the code of conduct thing should be a standalone issue. And I agree with some, a lot of what you guys have in there, dude, but I, I would say that the mayoral thing is going to come back to bite some people in the rear down the road and, and I, I think we should have a hard mayor, but that got shot down. So I think it's unfair that this mayoral thing's coming into play and, and I think the real move forward would be to, to reevaluate this situation with Bruce being knocked out of the mayoral thing. That was a tradition and everyone kind of rolled with that, and I think that, that's part of bad vibes around town and I really hope that we can do this a different way than this big giant 51 thing, and each one of them deserves their own thing. I mean, you're talking about the self-determination thing on itself deserves a huge agenda item. Plus park, that's what, that's my play zone I'm, I'm working on. That deserves its own policy, you know, agenda item. So I, I think that's what I would strive for is, is to do these over the course of the next couple of years, each one getting an agenda item and, and the public coming to, to here, that you can see people can't get through on their phones, people aren't here. This is, this isn't how we should be doing it in a free and open representative reality. So with that said, I hope we can decide to break this up and, and get more information out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Hamish. Who do we have next?
Give me just one second. Sorry, we're having some technical difficulties. Next is Pat Healy.
Hi, Pat. Are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Pat.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Much has been said recently about transparency. Having a meeting at 4:00 in the afternoon without the public having the current policies that guided the city for decades in hand in order for the public to understand the impact of the council's decision is the opposite of transparency. In order for the public to understand what's happening regarding the proposed and dramatic shift in the way the council conducts its business over these many years, the public has to be better informed. We recommend slow growth. I'm speaking for, for them. We recommend the following. The meeting today, I said should be postponed, which it isn't. If not postponed, no direction be given to the staff until there is another 10-day notice public meeting where each of the existing policies are fully vetted and it's known what exactly will replace them. From slow growth perspective, eliminating most of the policies that long guided the city and gave direction to staff for decades is a draconian action that leaves the city ship unmoored and restless. The reason for eliminating the policies by saying the policies are in the code is not a good is not a good rationale for the replacement of a policy. The city council and the city its employees must have must have good rationale, the city and the city council must have have both. They must have both because, um, the, the policy, the law states what, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought, but what I'm trying to say is, um, that we need both, that the law is the law, but the, the, the policies, the policies, um, give clear direction to the staff, and without it, they won't have the guidance. So thank you very much. I'm sorry for losing my
Thank you, Pat.
Train of thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Pat.
Next, we'll hear from Kami Winikoff.
Thank you. Kami, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
So I'm just very surprised that this issue is coming up on, at four o'clock on a Monday when everyone is working, and I tried to look through the, um, the staff's proposal, and to be honest, it's without having all the information and time to vet it and ask questions, it's, it's very unclear and confusing as to why the change in mayoral terms, why not having an opportunity to properly vet this and take time and have questions answered. I have to agree with the speakers before me that this just feels like the opposite of transparency, and that's extremely concerning. So I, I don't know what the, and, and really, what's most vague and unclear is the, is the intent. What is it that you're trying to accomplish? It doesn't feel in the best interest of the community, and so I'm not sure what, where are these goals aligned with community interests? I would ask that question and hope that you would give everybody an opportunity to speak and ask these questions and have them be answered before you make a decision this, this quickly. Um, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kami. Who do we have next?
Walter Zelman, but he's not in the meeting, so we'll move on to Carla.
We'll circle back to him, please. And next?
Next is Carla McCloskey.
Wonderful. Hi, Carla, how are you today?
Hi, I'm here. Yes, so, um, as all the speakers have mentioned, and those that couldn't be heard, I've read their comments the next door, and they are completely against this, so if they can't be heard, that's what they said in next door. No, this was a shock. It really was. As I recall, I will try not to repeat everything everybody else said, but I agree with it all, that this was, when we were, when you were doing the committees, I listened to everything, but I don't usually speak on Zoom, so this is a rarity. But I felt it was that important. And Bruce and Steve, as I recall, had submitted the proposal to instill transparency, and so this became a committee that it was going to be referred to, and Karen did not, she wanted to stay on the ad hoc this committee, even though they hadn't really done anything for the last time they were on it. She admitted that. And then Paul was chosen, and it's no secret that there's kind of a three-to-two thing going on here. So that just seems really ridiculous that you don't choose either Steve or Bruce to be on this committee with another person, to have two people that really have the same feelings about stuff is kind of, comes off as very political. The, all the resolutions are fifty-one, but the thing that really concerned me was this other thing at the end that was about the procedures and protocols that were written out, that I don't even know if we've had that before, and if we did, what was the difference with this one and why? It was originally trying to have the idea of transparency, and this has been the opposite of it. It's like a left turn. It's like nothing that any of us would even suspect would have happened. And I would suggest that if you do bring this back, which is ridiculous, I don't know why we're doing this now when there's so many others, so, such important things. I think it was because that, um, the idea of the transparency of city council was, that was supposed to be the reason, and I would suggest that Steve be on the committee because in watching all of these meetings, he is the one person I see trying to build a bridge between the two factions, and it doesn't always work, and it's very frustrating, and people that have come on and said that he's a newbie, I'm like, where have they been? So that's very frustrating to me, but I don't know why we're doing this now. It's dividing this community further. It's really done with no thought to the majority of people in this community, and it's not something that we want at all, and it has to be, these major changes really need to be discussed, like everybody has said, and it's not on Zoom. We need to wait till we can, there's nothing that is pending emergency here, and there are so many other things that really are. And why we're doing this now, I do not understand at all. It needs to be done when we can be in city hall and all speak and be heard and communicate, and I'm sorry, this is not the way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCloskey. Who do we have next?
Next would be Howard Retske, but he's not in the meeting, so we'll hear from Ryan.
Ryan, are you there?
Yes, thank you. I'm here. Um, all of those ladies have been way more polite than I'm about to be. As you can imagine, this is the second shoe to drop. This was, uh, picked and chosen and deliberate that neither of the two newly-elected councilmen would be on this committee with Karen, and instead, Paul, you're on this committee, and you're as newbie as anybody else. So, um, this is the second shoe to drop. This has been set in motion. There's twenty-one months until another election, and it's clear that the staff has had a huge, um, involvement with gutting these proposed policies. Uh, this set of policies serves as the constitution really of the city. It's the one place to go to see how the city functions and operates and what its priorities are. Whether or not there are any other references in the municipal code or a policy manual or an employment contract, those are different places with more specific or different details. But the wholesale negation of these protective policies that, you know, comprise the steady arm of Malibu city government do not deserve a fast track. They, I agree that no action should take place tonight. This should not be a council meeting. This should be a workshop of the public to get together and work on these policies. I agree that they need to be Malibu-specific, and whatever is works in Avalon may not work in Malibu with our state of development or a master-planned community like Westlake Village even. So, the, um, the clearinghouse of the city policies here needs to be understood that they apply to city staff. These are not applicable to the city council, but they apply to other groups as well, and I doubt those other cities. I, thank you for interrupting me, Paul. The, um, other cities may not have applicability to the staff and so forth. So these policies do protect Malibu residents in a very big way, and to cherry pick them and compare them to other cities, you know, that's not all that appropriate. I'd like to see the matrix. There should be ten days' notice for a workshop. Policy number seven, the community involvement with decision-making, this, this whole four P M. meeting and special meeting pretty much violates that policy. Same thing, policy number seventeen is extremely important. That is, performance audits of city departments. There should be two per year. I'm not talking about financial audits. These are performance audits. That needs to continue unchanged, and it might be very revealing if staff is promoting the decimation of that policy, as I read it. So.
That's your time, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan. Who do we have next?
Next is Terry Lukoff.
Hi, Terry, are you there?
Okay. Hi, Paul, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Terry.
Okay. The conflict did not happen when these two gentlemen were elected to the city council, and that's why you're starting at the wrong place. The conflict was prior to the election. The citizens of Malibu were unhappy with what was happening, and as a consequence, two people that favor slow growth, even slower than what's been happening in the last couple of years, were, were elected. Getting them on the council i- is positive. This is not negative. Working together is what the council needs to do. And what's happened here is it's set up as a three-to-two. That's not correct. All five of the people on the council love Malibu and are sacrificing their time, hours and hours every month for the council to get all, together. You people have to get, learn to get along, to get along better and everything. It's very divisive when I read in the program that not everybody that's on the city council will be elected to the, to the serve as mayor. That shows me that the three-to-two polarized vote is designed to keep people away from being mayor. This is not the correct direction. You, you guys need to step back, a- all of you, from a second and, and understand that you were elected to all work together, and, uh, that's, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Do we have anyone else that's available?
Next, next is Lynn Norton.
Hi, Lynn, are you there?
I'm here now.
Thank you, Lynn.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks. So, um, the first thing I would say is, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So we could just be looking at those policies where clearly something's not working and it needs to be adjusted, but to just create a project where there is no project, where, you know what I mean, where no need has presented itself, that is just, you know, as much chance that we're going to create unintended con- consequences that are bad as to do something good. We don't need to make a project where we don't even feel a need. And, um, I don't, also don't agree with getting rid of something just because it's redundant with something that's in a resolution or in the municipal code, because redundancy can be a good thing. Having everything gathered in one place, uh, is not a bad thing. When you get down to looking at the, you know, items that are really significant, I agree with what Hamish said. It's like each one needs its own attention focused on it, and if we can do it over a period of time, there's just, this just seemed to came, come out of nowhere. I didn't really even see this coming because I thought that we were having a conversation about transparency and that, you know, there's a clear motivation that people have to want to see processes that support transparency in the city, and, and that's what I thought we were going to be addressing with this, that, you know, to, to look at the policies in terms of how we can improve that. So I, I would just, I, you know, I oppose just doing a blanket changing of everything that we don't know needs any changing. So, um, I, I mean, I was gonna say things about transparency, but now it's like a, this is a whole other, you know, level of, of, uh, of a project, and I guess I would rather save those comments for when we get serious about looking at that individual issue, but for now, I would just say this has just gotten way out of scale from anything that, uh, anyone was expecting as far as I can tell. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Do we have anyone else available?
Next is Colleen Wong.
Are you there, Colleen? Can you hear me, Colleen?
Uh, am I, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. My comments are all over the place. I didn't have a lot of time to prepare. But, um, I came to this, uh, hodgepodge conglomeration of policies when Bruce was trying, you know, was all up in arms about, uh, not getting his items on the agenda over the last few months. And I went to look at policy, and, um, it was really hard to find because it's this, this random document. So I found it, and it wasn't really, um, comprehensive. I have done, as a, a private individual, I have brought my own items to boards in the past, governing boards, and it's very defined. How much time I have to speak, everything. And, you know, I was kind of surprised. Then I'm on this document and I start reading through it, and I'm like, and, you know, it's pages and pages and pages, and I'm like, this isn't council policy. I mean, some of these items were, I mean, they should be building code. They should be, it was the craziest thing. So, I, you know, maybe I'm a little stupid, but I'm, 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 I'm trying to figure out what it's supposed to be, because then you have all these posts. John Mazza on Nextdoor, this coup d'etat. You know, there's all these policies about private property rights. Um, John Cotty, can we, uh, you know, just, uh, a, a council policy on private property rights? You know, how do we do in court with that? You know, pri- private property rights are, you know, it's a state thing. It's, um, and then one of your speakers, you know, there are important things about dark skies and rodenticides. We have things about dark sky and rodenticides in our council policy? Shouldn't that be in building code? So Paul and Karen, I think you guys are doing the right thing, and I think all of you have spoken. Do you really want this PDF document and, and in all the different fonts and ages? We need to do better. I'm embarrassed by it, and, uh, I hope you guys can, and, you know, count, staff should put every policy in some sort of category and discuss it, and maybe some of it goes into, you know, the building code. I don't know. I, you know, I'm not that well-versed, and my time is running out, but, thank you. And council policy should be a separate thing. That's about council policy.
Thank you, Colleen. Do we have another speaker?
Next is Bill Samson.
Hey, Bill, what's new? Can you hear us?
Good afternoon.
Thank you, Bill. We hear you.
Okay. Well, this is a hatchet job that arose from a hatchet job. The original hatchet job deprived Bruce Silverstein of the presumably simply mo- I guess celebratory, but no effect ma- mayor pro tem title. Supposedly, our mayor doesn't have any additional power. The mayor is just a council person. The mayor's pro tem is just a brown, uh, council person. We then had a hatchet job where two people with obvious personal animosity toward Bruce Silverstein, conceivably both of whom have financial interests that would differ from those of us who supported Bruce, decide that they are going to create something called for transparency. It reminds me of the Employment, Employee Retirement Income Security Act, an act passed by the Congress of the United States during the Reagan administration, which does precisely none of those things and is in fact contrary to all of them. This effort is contrary to transparency and accountability. It also invites political hatchet jobs. I think it's pretty clear from reading it that the two people on the committee want to just sign up Mikey and censure Bruce. Bruce is vocal. Bruce stands against you. That's his right. But you just want to create an automatic, as you would, um, I suppose it would be an impeachment. Three-to-two would have worked in the Senate. It's not, it should not work in our city council. You have now created a document which would prevent the highest vote getter in the last election from ever being mayor. Purely an honorary title, we're told. Obviously, it must mean something else. To include material about supposed property rights. To include material about supposed property rights in city council policy, I can't imagine it standing up. You can codify it, you can put it in the building code, you can put it in the planning code, you can put it in the public safety code, you can put it, I suppose, in the fair skies ordinance or the Employee Retirement Income Security Act, but you can't just make a policy out of it. If you really want to have a policy and eliminate the, uh, all kinds of transparency, go ahead, adopt this. You can have a filibuster too. Maybe all the citizens should get one so you don't pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. Do we have anyone else ready to speak?
Next is Jonathan Kay.
Hi, Mr. Kay. I'm glad you made it. Are you there? Mr. Kay, are you there?
He doesn't seem to be unmuted. Would you like to move on?
Okay, yes.
Next is Joe Patterson.
Okay. Hello, Mr. Patterson, are you there? I think I heard you. Hello?
Yes, do you hear me?
Yes, that's good.
Oh, okay, good. All right. I'd just like to say, uh, I agree with most, almost all the speakers, uh, thus far. Uh, I'm extremely distressed by seeing this. I'm on the middle of a, in the middle of a highway right now trying to communicate with you guys. That's why it's so difficult. But old B, give them this short notice at four o'clock in the afternoon is just ridiculous. If you choose to move forward with any of this, I would like to hear Karen and Paul. I'd like to hear you go through each one of these fifty some odd items, line by line, and explain to us in your own words why it is you feel each one of these individual proposals is going to help the city, the city of Malibu and the citizens of Malibu. What it's, what good is it going to do each in every one of them? And I would like Mr. Silverstein and Mr. Euring to have the same opportunity to go through their proposal and give them the same time and the same chance to give an explanation of how their proposals will help instill transparency and ethics within our city. And in case you haven't figured it out yet, there's three of you that the majority of the city, we don't trust you. And this has not helped. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Patterson. Is Lori with you?
Lori.
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Lori, we're getting some feedback. Do you have a, do you have a computer on or a TV on? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This meeting needs to be handled. It's been passed, no one trusts you. It weren't out of the time, it's been years, it's been work hours. You know, maybe live, not a meeting. What do you guys need to do together? Karen and Paul, you guys should have been on the meeting with Bruce and me. So, I don't know, it's like a little corruption, that's what it looks like. You know, supposed to work on transparency. It looks like you worked on less transparency, no ethics and no accountability for you or for the people that you serve. You did the opposite. There wasn't out of the time to research what you wrote. It was written so poorly that I have to say either it was done so poorly on purpose so as to be completely invasive or I have to assume, you know, question your business for office. We couldn't even find the original resolution. It's very different from your proposal. It's just like numbers and you know what the process is, but, you know, so practicing this resolution is a happy job. Each proposal should have been voted, should be voted on individually, not being a lumped up thing that you can vote on, bring in the kitchen sink and have a guest on everything. Every single one of these things you guys need to have to go through, talk about, tell us how your proposal is different than the original if you wanted to leave. Why exactly we need to be handled, which we don't think we should? And why could we see a better change versus a worse change? Something would be good for Malibu residents and not you people. So, you know, you don't trust people and that you don't trust people anymore. Now you can't use this and the people of Malibu should be and are in sense. Some of them do dare to open their mouth and talk to people. They stand, you know, this whole weird thing has got to end and people have to be able to talk about what they want to post here. People that want a year long mayor and not have every council person be mayor so that Bruce can't be mayor or Steve can't be mayor if people have a great seat.
Lori, thanks very much.
Thank you, Lori.
Next is Lester Tobias.
Hi Lester, are you there?
Hey guys, am I unmuted?
You're unmuted, Lester.
Cool. Uh, listen, this is real quick. I mean, I actually don't have to say much. I'm, I'm in agreement with everybody that's sort of against this, this thing. And I, I, I do want to say that I feel like we've gotten to this one flew over the cuckoo's nest thing. And I want the inmates to go back to running the asylum. I want these blue ribbon commissions. I want my fellow citizens like deep in this stuff. I know it's, I know it's difficult and I, and I know it, it's fraught with its own problems. But when we have two people writing this stuff and, and Karen, I voted for you, you know, and, and, and Mikey, I voted for you and I, and I voted for Steve and, and I, and I voted for Bruce and I voted for you guys on policy. The way you guys enacted, I'm not really, I don't care. If it gets a little heavy handed, and I think so, I will tell you all directly, privately to your face, but I like the policies that Steve and Bruce are bringing to the table. Okay? So, uh, again, I don't like having two people set this up and have it happen as quickly as it's happening. I want to go back to having citizens running more of our town. And that's that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lester. Is there anyone else?
Walter Zelman.
Are you there, Mr. Zelman? Are you there?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now, Mr. Zelman.
Great, okay. Uh, I just wanted to say by way of introduction, uh, I haven't testified here much before, but I have, I have testified in the long history of, uh, political and policy, uh, career. I, I've testified before virtually every forum I can think of at every governmental level. But I've never had less time to prepare for something, for a presentation of, of this type of any kind. I'm concerned about what I've seen and heard, uh, but I don't know what to say. And that's the problem. I don't know what to say. I can't digest all this material in virtually no, no time at all. I do know this, that this election we just had in Malibu fairly recently was about reform. And reform includes transparency. And the candidate who got the most votes was the most pro-reform. And I know that there's been a lot of concern about Bruce's efforts on the council. I've watched some of the meetings and seen that. But it seems to me honestly that you're making his case for him today. He's talked about transparency and a process that people can understand. And maybe he's been too aggressive about it at times. But what we're seeing here today is a lot of people saying, we have no idea what this is. Or if they do have an idea what it is, they think it's the wrong form or it's too fast or there's not been enough notice. But I work, so I haven't had any chance to read the materials today. I work full time. And, uh, I'm disappointed that we're about to go through a, a process like this and you're considering approving something that a lot of people I respect are saying is rushed and complex and should be taken up in different forms more slowly, more thoughtfully. And, uh, that just doesn't, doesn't seem right to me. So it seems to me, to, to say it again, you're making Bruce's case for him. And maybe, maybe he's more right than I even thought he was. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zelman. Do we have anyone else waiting to speak?
Do you want to try Jonathan Kay again?
Sure.
I want, I, I don't know if you can hear me. I would just say the same thing that, that, um, that the power should be a little bit more to the people and, uh, that the people need more time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for, for trying so hard to get in, Mr. Kay.
The other two speakers are still not in the meeting, so that concludes the comment.
Thank you so much. I'd like to take just a moment very quickly to, to tell people that the document we're trying to come up with here is the twenty-one page City Council Policies and Protocols. As what we've done is taken out of the fifty-six pages of city council policies and strained out of that the items that actually have to do with the duties of city council people, commissioners and staff. And that is why we think that there should be a manual for people to look at. And now I think I should probably recognize some men, members of the council who would like to speak.
Um, could I also address some of the comments, Paul, before we do that?
Please.
I'll try to be quick. Um, there were several comments, uh, that, uh, this item was fast-tracked, but sorry, yeah. After the ad hoc committee was elected in December, Councilmember Euring pushed us very hard to come back with these and he wanted to know repeatedly when we would bring them back. He wanted them back on April eighth and I would have liked to have had that happen, but we had more work to do. So we were not ready to come back with them, excuse me, uh, March eighth. We weren't ready to come back with them on March eighth. Uh, and so we brought them back today. I want to also just point out, if everybody would look at the agenda on the front page, it says special study session. So that's what I consider this meeting, a study session. So we're happy to have the input. Uh, I'm happy to address more comments. I will address, um, Carla McCloskey. Carla noted that I wanted to stay on the ad hoc. This was a new, uh, a new election of this committee by a new council. And I will say, um, I've, I've held back from saying this, but I'll explain it now. Quote, even though they didn't do anything before. The previous ad hoc committee was Councilmember Jefferson Wagner and myself. We set up two meetings. As I explained before, we were not able to achieve a quorum at either of those meetings. I was there. The other council member was not. So we were not able to meet and go through these policies, unfortunately. Again, other council members mentioned that this was fast-tracked. Councilmember Euring wanted this back on March eighth. We were not able to have it back by then. A comment that if it's not broke, don't fix it. As many have noticed, we had literally a hodgepodge of policies put together over fifteen, twenty years. They deserved a full and thorough review. So, as I said, after looking at ten different cities and our own current policies and the proposal by Councilmembers Silverstein and Euring, we've come up with this draft. And that's why we're having this meeting, a study session. So, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Who would like to speak? I can only see five people. I must be in the wrong view. Sorry.
Me reverend up, Steve can go first as far as I can.
Steve, I see you now.
Okay, real quick. I, I, I agree with the majority of the speakers who addressed this this evening. And I think taking each one of these things individually and, and making sure they understand what it means and also expressing why it's good for the residents in the city for us to make these changes is going to be an imperative that we're going to move forward with this stuff. Second thing is, I think Karen lives in alternative universe from the one I'm in. Because at that meeting, what I wanted to come back was the, the, um, transparency and accountability item. That's what we talked about. And that's what Paul said he was going to bring back. You know, the rest of these policies, I had nothing, I didn't care about them. That was the one that was the key issue. So telling us that I'm the one that forced you to bring back this whole thing is a nice story, but not much truth to that one. And then finally, if we move forward on this thing, and maybe it's big to Paul or Karen, you guys could do this, I would like to get a little memo or email from you. If you could explain, you know, dealing with the accountability and transparency, transparency issue, what, you, what was included in your proposal here that dealt with those two things? What, what clauses, what positions did you take? What suggestion did you make that we're going to improve the transparency and accountability of the city? And if we could get that maybe in a separate memo so we could really understand that and make sure we've made some progress against that, if that's a possible thing, I sure would like to have that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Steve. Bruce?
Okay, so given the five thirty hard break and, and then I'm sure Mikey still has some comments he would like to make, I will not say everything I was going to say. I'm gonna have to refrain from going through all the specific comments about all the provisions of the proposal that I mean, that I don't understand and that need to be understandable for them to be a protocol or a policy. But I'll start with the general comments. In late December, Steve and I proposed a number of policies designed to improve transparency, accountability and ethics in Malibu city government. The other three city council members refused to even discuss the proposals when they were agendized for consideration. Instead, they appointed council members Farrar and Gressanti to be the Malibu Policy Zarrows. They sent the transparency, accountability and ethics proposal off to Siberia to be studied by the, the, the ad hoc committee. Today, we have the results of that study. Absolutely none of the transparency, accountability or ethics proposals are included. Not only that, there is no additional sentence that deals with anything to improve transparency, accountability or ethics, whether we drafted it or it came from somewhere else. Instead, council members Farrar and Gressanti have put forth a set of protocols for promoting an amiable conduct of city business in a polite society. A code of morals of sorts. The proposed set of protocols and policies expands existing limitations, limitations on transparency and accountability, does nothing to increase either. Instead, the protocols provide a mechanism for a majority of the city council to stifle dissent and punish the expression of views and the use of language they find offensive. Steve and I had proposed a number of, oh, sorry. Reading through the protocols, the benefit of all doubts as to the law is made in favor of stifling expression, especially dissent. There is no exercise of discretionary authority provided to create greater transparency to residents. For example, Steve and I had proposed that the discretionary California Public Records Act exemptions, which don't need to be availed to by a city, be closely examined and that the city of Malibu not avail itself to exceptions which do not prejudice the city if the documents are provided to the residents. And that where the exemptions are availed to, the city provide an explanation of why they are being availed to, not simply quote the language of the statute. And also provide some kind of explanation of what documents are being withheld so that citizens can evaluate whether they think the city is right and if necessary, go to court. There's nothing of that sort in these, these proposals. Steve and I had proposed that closed sessions be more limited, that they not be whenever they're allowed to be, but they only be when they really are necessary. Because again, they are discretionary. that they not be whenever they're allowed to be, but they only be when they really are necessary, because again, they are discretionary. We had requested that they be recorded so that if there's ever a future dispute about what happens during a closed session, there is a record, and people would be amazed if they could see what happens at these closed sessions. Also, we hit, we, it should be the case that after the issue that gives rise to secrecy is resolved, people should be able to know what happened at those closed sessions, if it won't prejudice the city going forward. So for example, if there was a negotiation of a particular contract, clearly you need to be able to talk about that in private and not let the party you're negotiating with know where you're going. But after you've entered into the contract, why shouldn't the public understand what was being done, what the rationale was, whether the city council truly represented the interests of the public or didn't? I also asked, we also asked for greater public explanation by the city council after closed sessions occur of what occurred, not simply no reportable action occurred. No provisions for learning after, so there's no provisions for learning after the fact what's concealed behind closed doors. Although this purports to provide for equal information to all council members, it doesn't clamp down on unrecorded oral communications which occur frequently with the city manager and other members of staff. And they are not equal, information is not equally provided. I've been asking for months to be given all information given to other city council members, and I'm not. This reduces the number of performance reviews currently required of the city manager, the city attorney and the treasurer. Again, less accountability. This arguably diminishes existing city council member access to information. This diminishes city council members' existing rights to place items on the agenda. That is now being more constrained than exists in the current law. It expands the authority of the ceremonial mayor, discourages under penalty of punishment, public communications critical of city, city council members and city employees. The council agenda report identifies many existing policies that are recommended to be repealed and adopted as resolutions. Now, if all that means is that the resolution will say verbatim what the policy currently says, sure, a resolution actually has greater strength of law than a, than a policy. It still needs to be findable, as John pointed out. But if this means they'll be rewritten by the ad hoc committee in any way, shape or form, it's a meaningless recommendation until we see the actual language, as the devil is in the details. In the same vein, with respect to many existing policies, the council agenda report says, quote, included in proposed city council policies and protocols, close quote, that's an outright misrepresentation. The draft council policies and protocols make numerous changes to the existing language of many of the existing policies, and there's no red line provided or any other explanation of the difference. Oh, before I go on, let me go back to the original, the original presentation, which someone mentioned, the comic book, I think that the presentation of what's being presented here is comic call. We did a lot of work. We looked at a bunch of policies, and this is what we came up with. That's basically what we were told. By the way, there are transparency, accountability and ethics policies in a number of cities that have become more advanced than the ones that were mentioned, but I'm sure they were not included. Oxnard, for example, has a transparency and accountability policy that they spent a lot of time on. There are a number of others that I've looked at in the past, and I, I, none of them were looked at here. Paul said that this is easier, that the purpose here was to provide an, an easier roadmap essentially for residents to understand or for city council members to understand, that's right, and residents. Okay, so when I was elected to city council, the first, one of the first things I did was I got a hold of the policy book. It's on the, it's on the web. I read it from beginning to end. It was extremely informative to me about what's important to the city historically, to the city, to the residents and the city council, and what's not important. It, it made sense to me. It's got, it's got a, you can click on the name of the policy and you can go right to it. You can search it by word. It, it gave me all kinds of information, importantly, a lot of information about all things that were being done wrong by this council, which was not following its policies. The resolutions were much more difficult to wade through. I managed to get a few of them. I looked at a lot, I looked at them, and there were a lot of resolutions that weren't being satisfied. But in any event, the policy is not un-understandable. This is un-understandable. Now, when I took office, I swore an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of California. In my view, there are provisions in these proposed protocols that my oath requires me to oppose. In my view, there are provisions that violate the First, Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments, the United States Constitution. And I'll have more to say about them if time permits on specific comments. Before this meeting, I asked the city attorney to identify every person who had any input that led to the creation of any portion of Articles Eight, I'm sorry, yeah, Eight and Nine of the draft protocols. Those are the, the articles that limit public discussion and which provide for the censure for whatever the city council decides is wrong. I asked for the identification of every person who had any input, and I asked for every person, if any, that the city manager or any other attorney or representative of the city manager spoke to with respect to those articles, because you never know where, how, how whistling down the alley or however that goes, the game of telephone worked. I've not received an answer. Now, with respect to specific, specific provisions, it's unclear to me what if any policies or protocols are mandatory, which are aspirational. That matters when it comes to enforcement of any nature, as well as any punishment for any alleged violation. Notably, Article Nine sets forth a scheme for censuring city council members for violations of the protocols. But Article Four, Section 12 says, these protocols do not by themselves carry the weight of law. Additionally, most of the protocols are framed as recommendations and aspirational descriptions. How does someone violate a recommendation or an aspiration? I'll have more to say about that later if time permits. The term officials is used frequently through the document. Does this include commissioners? Does it include the city manager? Does it include the city attorney? Does it include the treasurer? Who else, if anyone, does it include? The document states that the city manager is the city's CEO. To the extent the city manager is the CEO, many of the protocols reflect a level of micromanagement that is absurd for a CEO, even though I understand that such micromanagement is in fact typical of our current city manager. There are provisions that arguably expand the powers of the ceremonial mayor beyond those established by California law for a general law city. Now, Article Three, Section Six says, residents must speak to city council and not to the camera or public. Where did that come from? And how does that help with transparency and accountability? It's an inappropriate restriction on the residents, especially when many city council members are deaf to anything that does not support their agenda. City council members, city council meetings are a public forum. Residents have the right to speak to the public to generate political support for their views. If the public doesn't speak up, the city council doesn't do what the public wants. We all know that. Article Three, Section Nine, all meeting participants will tell the truth to the best of their knowledge and ability when presenting testimony or oral comment, or oral comments to the council or commission. I actually like that one. That, that's the one possible improvement of everything I've seen. But why not an oath requiring, otherwise it's an empty platitude? Article Four, this is the meat of the proposed code of morality. Council members treat each other with respect and courtesy as residents and public officials. Who determines what is respectful or courteous? What's the standard by which compliance is measured? Provision Three, the council maintains respectful decorum, avoids personal attacks during public meetings in the press or at any other time. Close quote, by what authority does council control statements to the press or otherwise outside of a council meeting? Who determines what constitutes a personal attack? Paragraph Four, difficult questions, challenges to
Bruce. You left out legitimate dissent or opposition to another council member's voting position or records on issues are within the bounds of appropriate political discourse.
Well, I will, I will speak to that later, but that's a separate sentence. I didn't omit it, and you have the right to speak when it's your turn.
And I have the right, as the person running the, the thing, to allow other people to speak as well, Bruce.
Paragraph Four, difficult questions, challenges to a particular point of view and criticisms of ideas and information are legitimate elements of a free democracy in action. This does not allow, however, members of the council to make belligerent, personal, impertinent, slanderous, threatening, abusive or disparaging comments. That's what it says. In their book Philosophy in the Flesh, the Embodied Mind and Its Challenge to Western Thoughts, philosophers George Lakoff and Mark Johnson write that fascism legitimize, legitimizes moral order and seeks to enforce it through the, the power of the state. That's precisely what that type of provision seeks to do. In addition to seeking to create a moral code, the proposed set of protocols and policies expands existing limitations on transparency and accountability and does nothing to increase them. I said that before. But instead, it seeks to punish dissent and response of people who are being responsive or responsible to the public. That's another hallmark of fascism, and it's in the antithesis of democracy. But in any event, who decides what these broad and ambiguous standards are? What is disparaging? What is impertinent? Is my statement of my opinion that some of the proposed protocols smack of fascism impertinent or disparaging? Would that subject me to censure? By what rate does the city council have to create a protocol that forbids my statement of my opinion when it relates directly to a matter of city business? I pause to note that existing policy number three, I'm sorry, number 13, existing one, provides for the creation of a code of ethics. Well, that code was created by Resolution 9289 in 1992. Nothing in that code of ethics attempts to legislate morality, as does this set of protocols proposed by the current city council ad hoc committee. Moreover, I submit there are multiple aspects of the existing ethics code that have been and are being violated by the city manager and others. There's more. Paragraph 10, if a council member takes a position in the media or at any public hearing critical of a decision or critical of a fellow council member or members' positions on issues, such public comments should stick to the issues under contention and never involve public, personal attacks. I guess since it says should, that's not mandatory. But if it is mandatory, where's the authority of city council to tell people what they can do in public? And if it's not mandatory, what are the consequences for failure to abide by it, if any? Paragraph 18, I'm not going to read the, all the words, but it goes on to talk, I'm, I will. All electronic mail communications between members of the city council and other person either relating to the city's business or communicated in the city council member's official capacity must be sent using the city council member's official electronic mail address issued by city staff. Council members are not to personally delete electronic mail communications from their accounts before the expiration of time identified in the city's retention policy. I actually like that. That is, that is transparent. But what's the source of the city council's authority to establish this requirement by way of a policy or protocol? That'll be something for the city attorney to answer at some point. What's the meaning of related to the city's business or communicated in the city council member's official capacity? How does one tell? What judicial decisions support the creation of this rule? It's notable that existing policy 51 does address these issues. Existing policy 51 says, the city council wishes to streamline the process for responding to requests for public records and afford council members a manner in which to conduct city business without using personal electronic devices. Council members who agree to abide by this policy shall be provided a city-owned mobile electronic device and a service subscription as approved by the city council for all its members consistent with this policy. Now, as for the authority for policy number 51, the existing policy says, the Public Record Act defines a public record as any writing containing information relating to the conduct of the public's business, prepared, owned, used or retained by any state or local agency, regardless of physical form or characteristics. It also then says, the act defines local agency as a county and city, but does not include individual officials or employees in that definition. Now, the California Supreme Court has gone on to hold that individual employees are included within the meaning of local agency. That makes sense because employees are agents of their employer. The employer has the right to demand that they do what the employer says, so long as it's lawful. California Supreme Court has not held that individual elected representatives are included within the meaning of local agency. And there are many reasons to believe that the California Supreme Court would not so hold if presented squarely with the question. Those arguments are policy-based and textual. But among other things, elected representatives do not represent the government entity. I've said that many times before. They represent the residents. They govern the entity. I represent the residents of Malibu. I don't represent the city of Malibu. I am one of the five people charged with the obligation to govern the city of Malibu. By way of analogy, in private sector, stockholders have rights to inspect the corporation's documents. So they're like the citizens, and the, and the corporation is the city. The courts have held that inspection rights include the right to inspect documents in the possession of employees because they are answerable to the employer, but not non-employee directors, which are what the city council members are. The reason for that distinction has to do with control. And by and out, so, so again, I ask, where's the authority for city council to be imposing these rules and then make them censurable if not complied with? I have a lot of, now I have a lot of questions about the meanings of the provisions of Article Eight. A lot of questions about the, the legal authority to adopt them. There's not time to go through them. There really should be. A proper staff report would have gone through and explained every one of these things, and then we'd have a real opportunity to dig into the details and examine all of the words and understand what the words mean, understand whether the words are consistent with the law or inconsistent with the law, whether they violate the constitution. And again, I said, the First Amendment, which, which grants free speech, there's a lot of stuff in here that cabins free speech beyond that which the Brown Act does. There's a lot in here which purports to make city council members subject to provisions that are beyond the Public Records Act. The Fourteenth Amendment requires specificity and not ambiguity, especially if you're going to be able to punish somebody. They need to understand what it is if they do it, they could be punished for. There's a lot of ambiguity in here that would violate the Fourteenth Amendment.
Bruce?
I'm skipping through, I'm skipping through my notes.
We, and we haven't let Mikey speak yet, and we haven't let John speak either.
Well, that's because we decided to have this on a Monday afternoon with a short time period to do this.
This is not the only
I'll stop, I will stop, but I want to note, I probably have five or six pages of comments and questions that I don't
We would love to receive those. Part of the reason for this, Bruce.
Because the Brown Act provides, I cannot send them to you because the Brown Act precludes it, Paul.
Bruce, part of the reason for this meeting was to get this to be something that we could talk to you about. And we can hold another meeting and talk about it. And you can reduce your things to writing and, and hand them out as part of the agenda packet for that meeting.
I'll be happy to
Am I correct, John? Mr. Cotty?
Yes, that information should be passed out as part of the agenda. And we will definitely include that for the next meeting. I think that's appropriate.
Are we going to set the next meeting at this time as well? And Mikey, would you like to take over that question?
No, not one bit. No desire at all to figure out what date we should come back on this.
How soon do you think we might, Steve, do you have a thought about that?
If we're going to, what are we going to do with the next meeting? I mean, a question is not scheduling another meeting. What's going to be different about the next meeting that we had in this meeting? It's going to give this stuff more clarity, it's going to give us the resonance and understanding of what we're trying to do and give the residents an understanding that our actions are actually going to make their lives better. What, how are we going to do that?
It seems that what, what people are asking for is for us to go through the 51 and explain to them that when we say we're going to adopt them by resolution, that, that as Bruce said, a resolution is stronger than a policy. And the other ones, we're going to talk about how we've moved them inside the council policies and protocols notebook you have here, which is 22 pages. Steve, go ahead.
I'm just, I, I, I would like, I'm no, I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, but I think you're skipping over the, the crux of what we're trying to get to.
Let me jump right to the part you care about, Steve.
Paul, hang on, let me finish, then you can, okay, there's, you've got a clause in there changing the, the mayoral appointment. I'd like to know why we're doing that, why that's a benefit to the city. What, I mean, you've got to answer all of those things because you are making major changes to what has been going on, and you're not going to get that done in 10 minutes.
That's, that's true, Steve, and I think that if, if you would like us to continue on the path we had before, I would invite you to make a change in a copy and circulate it prior to, as part of the agenda packet for the next meeting, and who knows, we might actually adopt it.
What?
The document can be changed.
What am I making, it's your policy, it's your, you've got to explain in detail why you're doing this. And we, and we can judge whether it's a good idea or a bad idea.
Steve?
Yes, Paul?
The, the policies book is our proposal. If you want to change any part of it.
I want to know why it's there. I want you to explain it to us first, please.
Let me explain to you why it's there, Steve. It's there because the policies total with the guide in the front, 56 pages. They're in no discernible order except by time.
Well, you're talking, you're talking about administrative, I want to know the, the crux. You are making changes to city policy. You're changing the mayoral selection. You're changing the, how we're, what we're going to audit department You're changing the amount, how we're, what we're going to audit departments. You make changes. Why are those things good for the residents? That's what I want to know and I want to be able to explain to the people who voted for me.
Well, we have a total of what, six minutes left?
Yeah, I view, that's what I'm saying. What are we going to do in the next meeting? You better, we want to figure it out.
I think that that is an ideal thing to attack in the next meeting, Steve.
Okay, then let's give me a definition.
When would you like to hold it?
Just give me a definition of what we're going to do, then we'll figure out a date.
We're going to work through this and decide if there's anything that you're willing to vote to pass or, or if there's any changes you would like to make in this during that time.
Are we going to get an actual agenda report that explains? Are we going to get an actual report that explains why these changes are being proposed or are we just going to get the text like we did this time? We usually get a multiple-page explanation of why the staff or in this case, the committee is proposing what is proposing. Here, what we got was, "These are our changes."
Right.
Okay. I don't think that that's a problem to do that. I think we can do that as part of the agenda packet for the next one.
Okay. How long do you think it'll take you to get that done? Because that'll tell you when you'd have next meeting, right?
Well, since we've been working with John, I'm going to ask him how long he thinks it would take to to work through the fifty-one things and our explanation of which they're going to and, and how the fact is that we're not really throwing out all the baby with the bathwater here.
Here, it's, it's not just the fifty-one things, it's an explanation of why the protocols and policies say what they say. There's nine articles that are being proposed.
I think we can come back... If you want to change any of the policies and protocols, we can, we can...
Let's do it this way, Paul. When we have our next meeting, will you take us through, and let's, let's leave the resolution. Let's just take this twenty-three-page document you have. Will you take us through all of the items you're listing in there and explain why you're, what changes you've made, why those changes are good for the residents, so we can make a decision to understand what the heck is going on? That's what the residents want to know. That's what I want to know. I don't understand why we're doing some of this stuff. And I think clarity and transparency and accountability, I know you guys don't like those words, but that's what we were trying to do with this thing. And we should do it.
What you're looking for is something that says that, you know, this, this item embodies policy number three. And there is no substantial change, so we can go to the next one. And they'll say this embodies policy number five.
No, no, that's not what I'm looking, I'm looking for you to go through this document and explain why you say city council evaluates the city manager on a regular basis. Whereas the original policy said it couldn't be done twice a year. Why is your proposal better than what we have?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you, Steve.
You got to go through the whole documents. You can, it's supposed, we're supposed to be done at five thirty, so Mike may want to say something. But that's what we want to know. I want to know, yes, go ahead.
If you want an answer, you have to stop talking so that I can talk.
I've been trying to get an answer. Go ahead.
Some of the people who are supposed to be reviewed, have it a review in their, in their contracts. So the people who made the contracts with them picked a time limit, time span for reviews and they put it in the contracts. I didn't write any of those contracts.
And Mayor Pearson, members of the council, if I could just, that, that policy now actually says that any time deemed appropriate by the council, they can evaluate the city attorney, city treasurer, or the city manager at any time, which is consistent with various contracts. So you don't have to do it only twice a year, only once a year. You can do it anytime you deem it appropriate.
Where's it say that? It doesn't say that.
It says that in section F at the very last sentence. At any time deemed appropriate by the city council, the city manager, city attorney, and city treasurer may be evaluated. That actually came from the council after reviewing your proposal for biannual reviews.
Okay, that's what we want to do. Let's go through all of this stuff and make sure we know what the hell we're talking about.
And I think we're going to have to have a meeting to do it because we're out of time now.
And again, if I could, then, I think that was going to be the intent of this meeting. It got a little off track. We had a lot of public speakers that raised a lot of good comments. I think what I'm hearing is that they want, Councilmember Silverstein wants some legal authority for some of the information in the policies and a further, the, the public wants a further explanation of why some of the information is in the policies. There, this was not a wholesale attempt by the council to attack any council member whatsoever. In fact, that never came up. With regard to, this policy was designed to govern the relationships amongst yourselves, amongst the commissions and committees and amongst staff, nothing more than that. It was designed simply to try and get a handle on what's been going on over the first few months of this new council's term. And if, if you don't like it, throw it away. That's perfectly fine. The mayorship was simply a reflection that it's sometimes difficult to get nineteen day, nine months and eighteen days and you have just staggered terms, some, to bring it all together. Yes, one person might get to be mayor in that situation. But again, if you hate that policy, delete it. That's fine. Go back to the original policy. That was the intent of the ad hoc committee's proposal. There wasn't, there was nothing beyond that. I'm happy to go through it and kind of set forth the legal basis and the the changes that were recommended by the ad hoc that are contained in this policy document. And I think we can have that. You know, I don't know what's coming up on your future agendas, but the April nineteenth agenda, which is your, if that's your first meeting in April, if I'm not mistaken? April, maybe April twenty-sixth? And if, if the council doesn't want to do, if the council or the public doesn't want to do a workshop, we are happy to do it as a regular agenda.
Can we also get an explanation of why the various policies Steve and I had proposed were rejected?
What? I, I will, you know, I'd have to talk to the ad hoc committee, but yeah, I would endeavor, I'm, I'm happy to. Sure. Go through that, sure. And I don't know that there were wholesale, wholesale rejects. I think some of it is embodied in the document again, so.
Those that were rejected, we should get an explanation of why, so we can discuss whether that's, whether we agree with that reason.
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to prepare that document.
You included a reference to the Brown Act, which it takes most of the problems that with, with the, your policies.
And, and one last note with regard to policy fifty-one in the current city council policies document. To be honest with you, the council just, the ad hoc committee just didn't get there. My, I'm not going to... Didn't get there and they recognized that there was going to be more time. The email policy is another one that, that you've, your proposal addresses that they just didn't have time to get to, so. That is something that they will, I think, are intending to get to.
Here'd be my suggestion. Take, take a list of the top, I don't know, ten items, take it ten at a time, produce a document that says, "Here's what the change is, here's why we made the change, here's why it's better for you," and feed it out to the residents piecemeal, so they got a chance to look at it. They got a chance to understand it. They got a chance to come back and comment on it. And it's going to take us a little bit longer, but I think we'll end up with a better result when we're done.
And I, I think that that's a, you know, assuming that it's okay with the ad hoc committee, I'm, I'm happy to, to engage them in that. Councilmember Silverstein asked a question of who all was, was involved in this. It really was Councilmember Grisanti and Councilmember Ferrer and myself. And we worked through all these policies and discussed them in great detail. Is the document before you perfect? Of course not. It was meant to be a discussion document that, that you guys would vet.
John, I've noticed that, that nine eight is missing the rest of the sentence.
It's, it's in the first sentence. It should be just stricken all together. It's a mistake.
I'll take a look.
It's in paragraph, it's in nine one and then it got stuck in nine eight again by accident.
Okay, so Paul, explain what we're going to get in the next meeting, if you would, please.
We're going to get to do what you said we wanted to do and right now you get to go and eat, Steve, if you want to go and eat.
No, but just explain it. So I, I understand you and I are on the same piece of sheet music. What are we going to get with, with the next meeting?
The next meeting, we're going to go through and explain the, we've given you something here with the policies list and said where you can find each of those individual policies and where they're incorporated into this document that we're proposing. Okay, you already have that. It's up to you to look at it and decide if we've left any parts out. And for the ones that we've changed, we'll write about why we've changed them.
No, it's not my job. You, you got to tell us what you've changed. I'm not going on a witch hunt, Paul. If you've changed something, explain why you've changed it.
Steve?
Yes, Paul?
It is your job to read the agendas when they come out.
I do that.
Good, so we're all clear.
You're not asking me to... You're asking me to step in and do, do work, try and figure out what words you've left out. And that's, you, you made the changes. You tell us what you left out and we can decide if it's right.
And what you added.
Well, we would compare the act, the policy, the old policy and, and where it appears in the new, and you get to read the two of them and tell us where we've screwed up and didn't make it the same. How's that, Steve?
If you do that, that would be beneficial, yes.
No, this is, this is the thing, you know, when you, when you change a statute, you provide a red line.
These are not statutes, Bruce.
I understand that. Let me finish my sentence. When you change a statute, you provide a red line that shows what it used to say and what it says now. When you're changing policies, you ought to follow the same process. I'm not saying you're legally mandated to, but it's fairness. Again, it's transparency. How are we supposed to know what words you changed, what you added, what you omitted, what you moved around without being provided with a red line?
Bruce, I'm going to ask you to look at the list of policies that are part of the agenda package. And under policy number one, it says that we delete it. Why? Because the recommend, the information is already included in the city's administrative guidelines pursuant to MMC Section Two sixty... What?
I did go through the twenty-three-page document and I noticed lots of language which is different than the policy it purports to adopt. So I want to understand where the language was changed and where it was put in verbatim.
Paul, let me ask the question. Why are you so reluctant to be able to clearly explain to the residents what it is you're doing? Because that's what they want to hear.
It's hard for me to explain, Steve, when, when the residents use up all the time talking about something they read on Nextdoor.
So now it's the residents' fault, okay?
Steve?
That's what you just said. It's the resident, it's not the residents' fault. They're expressing themselves, that's their right. And they should have the ability to do that. Your job is to make sure when you're changing stuff, they have a clear understanding of what you're changing, why you're changing it and what is good for the residents. That's what I believe, yes.
People want some time to think about it and so we're going to give them time to think about it. And we're going to help you think about it.
Good.
Hopefully, we'll, we'll all be better informed by the next one.
That'd be wonderful.
And if you'd like to go to dinner, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So we don't have another meeting or have a date, don't go have any of those things?
We're journeying and then we're going to come back here at six thirty and have a city council meeting.
Okay.
But, and perhaps by the end of the city council meeting, someone will have looked at the schedule and said where they think we can set it in. I think it should probably be a separate meeting that's separate from city council. Bruce, do you have a question?
No, well, first of all, I agree with that. I think an evening meeting directed, this subject is a great idea, but I was like, I spent a lot of time fly-specking this twenty-something page proposal. I noticed many material substantive differences between the policy that it says it is reflecting and the policy that it does reflect. It's not fair to us to have to figure out those differences. You are the masters of the document. You should explain to us where you made changes and why you made changes. Every word matters.
Bruce, you've already fly-spect it, so I would expect you to tell us where we screwed up. In the meantime, we're going to work towards it.
Hey, guys, guys, we're going in circles.
Mikey, you haven't been recognized at all. May I help?
I'm, yeah, I apologize. We're going, we're going in circles now. I, we're kind of going back over. Let's, this is a huge amount of work and obviously it's got a ways to go. So there's a number of, a number of things people want to see and hear. It's not going to happen overnight. I think we'd be guessing at a date right now. Maybe you know and by the end of tonight, that's great. But let's, let's do this right. But I think that's way more important and there's clearly a lot of input that is needed to be heard and, and stuff to be figured out. And it's obviously a lot of changes here and changes hard and some of it probably makes perfect sense and who knows? It's a lot, a lot, a lot to absorb for sure. There's a lot for me to absorb. I'll put it that way. And I read it multiple times. So, I know it's your meeting, but I think let's, let's, let's acknowledge that this is an ongoing process and let's, let's go take our break and so we can have a good job at the next city council meeting here and let's thank all the speakers and, and everyone's input. That's right, what I would say.
Thank you, Mikey. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
You're a second. Having heard a motion in a second. Is Heather, do you have to take a roll?
Yes. Councilmember Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ferrer?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Pacham Grisanti?
Yes.
You're adjourned?
Thank you.
See y'all later.
See y'all a little bit.